Great, welcome everyone. This hearing will come to order. My name is Kevin Cromar and I've been asked to be today's hearing officer. We're here today to consider proposed amendments to the Utah State Implementation Plan, Section 20A, Regional Haze, Second Implementation Period in Section 9, Part H21 and Part H23, Emissions Limits and Operating Practices. This hearing is an opportunity for the Division to receive verbal comments as part of the public comment process and to ensure that all comments are heard. We ask that you refrain from making any oral comment if someone has made the same comment already. We will not be responding directly to comments today. Although the staff here, they are available to respond to requests for information. This hearing is being recorded and comments will be reviewed and summarized later. DAQ's responses to all comments will be included in the board packet submitted to members of the Air Quality Board during the July Board Meeting. To ensure a fair and neutral environment for the hearing, we do not allow signs or other advocacy materials in the hearing room. Think we're okay? And we ask that participants remain quiet while others comment. We do have some staff members here. Bryce Burr, Director of Division of Air Quality. We have Becky, which I don't know Becky's last name. Becky Close, thank you. Beau Wood, thank you. Chelsea, great. We're so friendly, we only know first names here. Melissa Yahtzee. Yahtzee. And now I feel guilt. Thank you. Do we have any other staff members here, Bryce? Like I said, this isn't a time to have back and forth, the DAQ staff, but they can respond to requests for information today. To give a little background on the Regional Haze Rule, Regional Haze requires Utah to address regional haze in each mandatory Class 1 area located in Utah and any each mandatory Class 1 area located outside of Utah that may be affected by pollutants emitted from sources within Utah. Utah is required to submit a SIP revision to the EPA, addressing the specific elements required by the rule during each 10-year implementation period. The objectives of the Regional Haze Rule are to: 1. Improve existing visibility in 156 national parks, wilderness areas and monuments; 2. Prevent future visibility impairment by man-made sources; and 3. Meet the national goal of natural visibility conditions in all mandatory Class 1 areas by 2064. Utah's Class 1 areas are Archer's National Park, Bryce Canyon National Park, Canyonlands National Park, Capital Reef National Park and Zion National Park. The actions deemed necessary in the draft SIP, which we're commenting on today, for reasonable progress to be made in the second implementation period consist of establishing a firm closure date for Units 1 and 2 of the Intermountain Generation Station, setting mass-based emission limits for Pacific Corps' Hunter and Huntington Power Plants, incorporating existing permitted SO2 emission limits into the second planning period SIP, and requiring the installation of a flue gas recirculation unit on the Riley Boiler at U.S. Magnesium's Rowley Plant. The emissions limits proposed for Pacific Corps ensure that their emissions do not exceed their modeled or recent actual emission levels to maintain Utah's 2028-on-the-books projections as modeled by the RAP to ensure reasonable visibility progress at Utah's Class 1 areas by the end of this implementation period. Obviously, you're welcome to comment on any aspects, the entire Regional Haze Rule. In addition, the Utah Air Quality Board has specifically requested public input on the following topics: the need for a cost threshold, whether a mass-based limit or a rate-based limit would be more appropriate, whether the closure date for the Intermountain Generation Station should be from a range of January 1st, 2026 to December 31st, 2027, whether other controls explored in the draft SIP are both technically feasible and cost-appropriate for U.S. Magnesium at an appropriate date, and whether dry sorbit injection is considered cost-effective at Sunnyside. Today, we have folks in person and online. We have a hybrid format. If you're joining us online, the attendance will be recorded automatically. If you're here in person, I think you've signed in. If you haven't, please sign in before you go today. If you're online, you'll find a link in the chat window. I think Beau is going to be navigating that for you. For those in person, there are signs posted around the room with the link. Elected officials will be invited to comment first, followed by members of the public in the order in which they appear on the Google Sheet. The number of people who wish to comment will determine how much time we allow for each comment, and we encourage all participants to avoid repeating comments that have already been made. Please note that written verbal comments will be considered equally. If you wish to submit written comments, you may provide a copy of them to us at this hearing or mail them to DAQ at the addresses provided at the door and in the hearing notice. The comment period will close at 5:00 PM on May 31st, 2022, and we will accept comments postmarked by that date. All right, now we get to your comments. The hearing will last at least one hour, but we'll make sure we have time for everyone to make their comments. And so with that, let us begin. Our first commenter today will be Kirsten Merritt from Salt Lake, from Pacific Corps. Kirsten, go ahead. Kirsten, I apologize.
When you make your comments, please state your name, spell the name, so we have a query for the record and go on with your comments.
Yeah, we'll do. All right, well, my name is Kirsten Merritt. It's K-I-R-S-T-E-N, last name Merritt, M-E-R-R-E-T-T. And I'm an Environmental Technology and Policy Manager for Pacific Corps. I appreciate the opportunity, on behalf of the company, to offer these public comments regarding the second planning period state implementation plan, or offered through the SIP for regional haze and the potential impacts the SIP will have on Pacific Corps' Hunter and Huntington Power Plants, which I'll refer to as the Utah Units, located in Emery County, Utah. Pacific Corps will also submit formal written comments in support of Utah SIP. The comments today are offered to highlight a few key points. First, Pacific Corps thanks Utah for the time and expertise expended to develop a regional haze SIP that complies with the Clean Air Act and protects visibility in the relevant Class 1 areas. Utah has appropriately exercised the discretion granted to the states under the Clean Air Act by developing a SIP that meets statutory requirements as well as the standards and guidance provided by EPA. Pacific Corps supports the state's cost analysis methods. They are reasonable and consistent with the regional haze program's requirements, goals and guidance. Utah considered the appropriate cost of borrowing relied on Pacific Corps' past cost analyses regarding selective catalytic reduction, or SCR, and selective non-catalytic reduction, or SNCR, controls, and determined the cost issues favored mass-based NOx emission limits over costly post-combustion add-on controls due to historical and potential future utilization projections for the units. Pacific Corps agrees with the state's SIP determination that SCR is not cost-effective for the units based on current data. An SCR requirement could lead to the early retirement or forced conversion to natural gas of one or more of the Utah units. The details of these potential outcomes are outlined in our written comments, as well as the impacts of these potential outcomes on the local communities around the plants. The costs for an SCR retrofit have increased fairly dramatically since Pacific Corps submitted its four-factor analysis, which means the control would be even less cost-effective than already determined by Utah. Pacific Corps requests that the state consider cost increases due to inflation, supply chain issues, extended project timelines, higher metal prices and higher supplier costs in its final evaluation of the SIP. Inflation we all face today also impacts the costs of pollution control equipment. As the state's analysis demonstrates, the minimus projected visibility impacts from installation of an SCR do not justify the significant costs. Pacific Corps recommends the state also complete a cost analysis on a dollar-per-despive basis as a simple cost effectiveness estimate that provides an additional support for and further strengthens the state's findings. A dollar-per-despive analysis will help the state determine the most cost-effective ways to improve visibility in Class 1 areas. Pacific Corps supports the state's decision to use a plant utilization sensitivity analysis and its recognition of the complex and changing dynamics that electric generating utilities must navigate. The state's conclusion that mass-based NOx limits will achieve reasonable progress is consistent with past EPA practice and provides important flexibility for the Utah units. The mass-based limits enable Pacific Corps to pursue the best path to provide reliable, safe, low-cost power to customers while ensuring reasonable visibility progress is achieved. For several reasons, the Utah units are very important to ensure Utah and other states in the West have sufficient and reliable electricity. First, each of the units is capable of providing more than 400 megawatts of electricity and represents important system generation capacity. Second, because the Utah units can quickly and reliably ramp generation up or down depending upon system needs, they play a vital role in accommodating intermittent renewable resources like solar and wind while still ensuring a grid stability. Forced early retirement of a Utah unit could restrict the level of renewables that can be accommodated. The Utah units also play a critical role for Pacific Corps' transmission systems. Significant upgrades of the transmission system will be required to maintain the reliability of the transmission system if one or more of the Utah units were forced to retire. These upgrades are costly and require an extended time to allow required study, planning, testing, design and construction processes to maintain the reliability of the transmission system. Finally, Pacific Corps supports Utah's 30-day rolling average SO2 limit for the Utah units. The SO2 controls at the plants are efficient and effective and cannot be upgraded to become more efficient in a cost-effective manner. The state's decision on the SO2 limit aligns with EPA guidance because these units already operate modern, efficient SO2 controls. Again, Pacific Corps thanks the state for the opportunity to offer comments on the SIP for the second planning period regional haze. The company supports the state's proposed SIP based on the state's well-reasoned analysis and exercise of its discretion to determine the appropriate standards to achieve reasonable progress for a second planning period of regional haze.
Great, Kirsten, thank you. Does staff have any clarifying questions they'd like to ask? No, Kirsten, thank you. All right, we'll go next to Lauren. I can't read your last name, I apologize. From Pacific Corps as well. Lauren, I guess.
Lauren. Yes, my name's Lauren Huntsman. L-A-R-E-N. Last name H-U-N-T-S-M-A-N. So as mentioned, my name's Lauren Huntsman. I am the plant manager of the Hunter and Huntington Power Plants in Emery County. Just a little background on me, I've worked for Pacific Corps for a little over 31 years. Been a managing director for a little over 13 years. Also, I'm a sixth-generation Emery County citizen. So Emery County and the future of Emery County is very much in my mind. Proud to be part of an organization and plants that are looking for innovative ways to continue to provide power, low-cost power, to all of its ratepayers. Proud to be part of a group of employees that operate the plants, very professional employees, employees that recently, one plant just recently hit 2 million man-hours without a recordable incident. Employees that are fully engaged in looking for opportunities to maximize flexibility of the plant and initiate procedures and operating plans that would allow that flexibility. The plants, both Hunter and Huntington, have dramatically changed operating procedures over the last several years. The employees have implemented modifications to procedures. They've made modifications to the plant. They've increased or implemented new software, all in the goal of increasing the turn-down, or in other words, the minimum load, reliable load that the plants can operate at, while also increasing or maximizing the ramp rate of the plants. How fast can you ramp the rate, the plant up? How fast can you ramp the plant down? Been a lot of training, a lot of out-of-the-box thinking to be able to get the plants to move to that direction. That new way of operation has facilitated Pacific Corps to be able to, has allowed Pacific Corps to facilitate and also to see the benefits of the different energy sources that are out there and available by allowing flexibility within the plant to utilize and participate in the energy imbalance market. That ability allows the plant to, in essence, back off, load when there is renewable and other energy sources available, bring that onto the system, but then also provide reliable, low-cost, safe and environmentally sound energy when that other energy source is not available. All the time, providing grid stability, controlling frequency, providing frequency control to the grid and frequency-controlled grid. The power plants in Emery County are an integral part of the local economy. Hunter Plant employs 186 employees. Huntington Plant employs 136 employees. And there are thousands of other supporting industries, mining, transportation, other supporting industries that are local to Emery County, all of which rely on the plants for a sound economic base. Pacific Corps in 2021 paid approximately $23 million in property tax in Emery County. That's about two-thirds of their total property tax revenue. 60% of that goes to the local schools in supporting training and helping our kids. Emery County and Carbon County rely on the plants as a significant employer and a significant part of their tax and wage base. A recent chem gardener report identified Carbon County and Emery County as some of the lowest diversity, economically diverse counties in the state, strictly because they rely so heavily on the power industry, the mining industry. In consideration, it's important that we balance local interests, efficiencies, economics and people as we pursue strategies to grow and clean our power systems. Just a few last statistics. If we were to implement an early retirement of a single unit, that would result in approximately 20% to 25% of the employees needing to be laid off or displaced. And then a proportionate amount of other supporting industries would also fill that effect. There are approximately 4,000 jobs in Emery and Carbon County that support the plants and the mining and other supporting industries. Wages for the plant workers is high compared to other comparable industries, and so the wage, the wage base, the ability to spend money and support local communities is there with that. The welfare of the communities around the plants is intertwined and it's dependent upon the presence of the plants. The community welfare is an important factor supporting Utah's proposed Regional Haze SIP and the selection of a more flexible mass-based limits over the much more costly and inflexible SCR requirement. This flexibility could well mean the difference between continued operation under the new limits or forced early retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren. Does staff have any clarifying questions? I have one. You mentioned earlier retirement, earlier retirement relative to what?
In the economic analysis of installing SCRs or more costly equipment, the evaluation of is it costly, is it more cost-effective to shut a unit down and rely on front-office transactions or other means to supply energy versus keeping the unit operating?
Are you working off of, you know, there's planned tentative dates, 2036? Earlier than those tentative dates?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you for my question. Appreciate you. All right, next we have Samantha Pensari from the Sierra Club.
Hello, Samantha Pensari. Hello, my name is Samantha Pensari. I live in Draper and I just graduated from the University of Utah in Environmental Studies. I have been lucky enough to have grown up in a state with diverse landscapes and communities, living within miles of some of the most extraordinary national parks. I'm here today because I want you to review and improve the state of Utah's draft Regional Haze Plan and protect our landscapes. Archer's, Canyonlands, Capital Reef, Bryce Canyon and Zion's National Park have some of the most breathtaking views. I've spent some time exploring our national parks. I still remember the day when I first looked out and I could see the red rocks so perfectly formed underneath a bright blue sky. It was unbelievable, a view that I've never seen. This place felt like home and I never wanted to leave. I hope that I can continue exploring our national parks in the future. Unfortunately, Utah is ranked in the top 20 of the worst polluters in the U.S. for Regional Haze and emit several thousand of tons annually. Hunter, which is ranked number two, and Huntington ranked number 18, coal-fired plants have polluted with zero consequence. These views that I have learned to love will soon be covered in pollution. Utah's proposed state plan is continuing the zero consequence and allowing these coal-fired plants to pollute our national parks. The plan does not make any real or measurable progress toward reduction in emissions from these coal-fired plants. Not only the plant, or not only does the plan propose limits that would actually increase our current levels, it also has not set a cost threshold that is necessary to support the state in determining pollution control requirements. Under the Clean Air Act, Class 1 areas such as our national parks are protected under the Regional Haze Rule. In order to meet the Regional Haze Rule, Utah's plan must take real and measurable emission reductions. I'm asking you once again to review and improve the state of Utah's draft regional plan and protect our landscapes and communities. Thank you for your time.
All right, next we have Paula Decker, who is a citizen from Washington Terrace, Utah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dr. Paula Decker. It's P-A-U-L-A-D-E-C-K-E-R. I live in Washington Terrace, near Ogden. I teach geography classes at the University of Arizona in their fully online program. My expertise, though, is not in air quality, so I'm here today like everyone else, just as the concern shows them. And I'm really concerned by this draft plan. I don't think it has nearly enough concrete steps in it that we could take to reduce emission of the pollutants that cause haze and other problems with air quality in the region. You know, I really like bumper stickers, even the ones I don't agree with. If they make a point and they make me laugh in less than 10 words, I think that's pretty cool, pretty remarkable. One of my favorites is from Texas, and you might have heard of it. It says, "I wasn't born in Texas, but I got here as soon as I could." So I didn't pick the right parents and I didn't get born in Utah, but we moved here just as soon as we could get here. And that's how I feel. And I really think we ought to steal that bumper sticker because Texas doesn't have anything on Utah. The first time I came to Utah was on a road trip with my dad and my husband and my son, who was pretty young back then. We drove from Tucson to Missoula, but we spent most of our time in southern Utah. And I remember when my constantly moving, bouncing son was stunned into silence and remarkably stillness by a view in Bryce Canyon. He stopped running and was just staring at the hoodoos that marched out waves below us. The trip was pretty incredible, of course, but since moving here, we've spent as much time as possible in our amazing mountains and incredible parks and forests and state lands. They're some of the best times that we've had together as a family, you know, outdoors here. So the rest of my family is pretty scattered about, unfortunately, but it's really not hard to get people to come visit me here. All I do is send them a picture of Archer's or Canyonland and promise them a short road trip to one of them while they're here. My mom came to see me again in March and we took her to Zion for the first time. And she's getting pretty frail these days, but she could put us all to shame. She likes to go and she has a ton of energy. So we were able to spend two days there in Zion, just taking our time, you know, on all the easy walks that they have available. And she didn't want to leave. We spent some time just hanging out on a bench there, just sitting quietly and soaking in the view, and it's one of the best memories I know I'll have of these years with my mom. So we all know there's really practical reasons to do what we need to do to reduce haze and air pollution. We know that there'll be benefits for people's health. I mean, that's just a fact. We know, of course, that the economic benefits of our parks are quite significant them alone. But mostly, I mean, I think we all know that we should protect these places and our ability to see and enjoy them because they're so incredible. Because everyone who gets to spend time in them comes away with a lifetime's worth of memories that they share with friends and family and loved ones. And that, to me, is the most meaningful part of life. So please, I'm asking you to issue a plan that reduces emissions and to require firm closing dates in the Intermountain Generating Station. There's some good points that I saw in that plan, to take steps to measure and address the real emissions from oil and gas wells in the basin, and to actually require the installation technology that's possible, the installation of technology that's possible, reduce nitrogen oxides from the coal power plants, Hunter and Huntington. And I just have to say that using the excuse of recent changes in our economy and inflation that are contingent, not likely to continue for the entire period of this next implementation plan, is pretty disingenuous, in my opinion. But in any case, cost threshold is something that needs to be taken into account, and if cost is an important factor, which surely in a practical way reasonably is, and we need to set some defined measures for those cost thresholds. And I know you guys are able to do that. And I just can't imagine that, given that Hunter and Huntington are planned to be operating for another 14 to 20 years, that we allow that to continue without the available technology to reduce these emissions, if that's going to be the case. So finally, I mean, we have all the expertise we need. We can address these challenges ourselves in the state. And so I just don't understand why the Air Quality Board would put out a plan that might be viewed inadequate by the feds. I mean, we can do this ourselves, right? And I think that we should. So I'd like our elected leaders and experts they appoint to do this, make a plan that reduces pollution and haze, protects our parks, protects our health, and our future will be. And if you do that, then you'll be able to know that you're doing the right thing for all of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Any questions from staff? Okay, good, thank you. Next, we have Jim Ireland from the National Park Service. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, thanks. I'm Jim Ireland, J-I-M-I-R-E-L-A-N-D. I'm the superintendent at Bryce Canyon National Park, and I'm joined today remotely by my colleague Jeff Bradybaugh, superintendent at Zion National Park, and he'll follow me directly. Thank you for this public comment opportunity today. The National Park Service has been working with Utah staff on regional haze state implementation plans development for the last few years, and we really appreciate the diligence of the state staff in working on this issue. The National Park Service has an affirmative legal responsibility to protect clean air in national parks. Going back to the 1916 Organic Act, which created the National Park Service, there's a mandate to conserve the scenery, natural and cultural resources and other values of the park in a way that will leave them unimpaired for the enjoyment of future generations. This statutory responsibility to leave NPS units unimpaired requires us to protect all units from the harmful effects of air pollution. In more than 100 years since that law passed, United States Congress and many presidents have repeatedly established protection for clean air, scenic values and federal law. In fact, all five of our national parks are federally designated Class 1 areas under the Clean Air Act, receiving the highest level of air quality and visibility protection. These are areas designated for protection under the Regional Haze Rule, which aims to eliminate human-caused haze in Class 1 areas by the year 2064. That may seem like a long way off, especially considering that this rule was first enacted in 1977. National parks plan for the long term. Utah and other states are responsible for implementing the Regional Haze Rule by reducing air pollution and making reasonable progress towards the goal every 10 years. But today, I come before you in person, because it's important that we be here to meet face-to-face, to encourage Utah to to face, to encourage Utah to require additional emission reductions in this planning period. The NPS technical team has identified and recommended significant opportunities to improve the draft zip and make more rapid progress towards the clean air future that we're all striving for. Jeff will talk more about that in a minute, but first, let me just share just a bit about my home park of Bryce Canyon. I have to, wired. Bryce Canyon is proclaimed a national monument. We'll be celebrating our centennial next year. It was a monument in 1923 and then a national park in 1928 for its unusual scenic beauty, its scientific interest and importance. And we honor our enabling legislation today, ensuring that over 2.5 million people who visit the park each year are able to enjoy unparalleled views out across the colorful clay hoodoos, the pinion-lined washes, and bristlecone-studded ridges, and the great expanse of the geologic grand staircase. In fact, between Jeff and I, we represent or manage approximately 8 million recreational visits to our two parks alone. And as has been noted, significant economic input. I believe our 2020 numbers of our economic modeling in the National Park Service, the latest ones from 2020, gave us, showed more than $1 billion in economic throughput in the state of Utah from national park visitation alone. So as we talk about the economics of it, know that in rural Utah especially, tourism and visitation is a significant issue as well. Our surveys indicate that 90 to 95% of people who plan park visits plan to take sights, see the sights, and take photographs, to enjoy those untrammelled views. When visitors are here, the top two activities they engage in are sightseeing and photography, activities readily impacted by haze. Moreover, over half the park is after dark. Bryce Canyon is a gold-tier international dark-skY park. In fact, I believe the state of Utah boasts more designated dark-skY parks than any state in the United States. Thousands of visitors each year come to visit, witness the awe-inspiring sight of the Milky Way arcing across that deep starry sky. As with daytime views, even a slight amount of haze can mar that experience. Bryce Canyon's been monitoring air quality since the 1980s, and in 2009, we installed an air quality webcam at the south end of the park, which quite distinctly shows the difference between a clear day, when visibility extends over 300 kilometers, and allows visitors to see rich colors, detail and distance, as opposed to a hazy day, when visibility is cut in half and the landscape is short, flat, and muted. I encourage you to go to our website, click on that webcam anytime, and just see the difference air quality makes to our view shed. Given how crucial air quality is to the park mission and the visitor experience, we hope that the state will do everything in its power to reduce haze and improve visibility so that we can all enjoy those magnificent views. Thank you for your time, and I'll now pass it over to my colleague on the phone, Jeff Bradybaugh, superintendent of Zion National.
Great, Jim, appreciate it. Staff, any questions for Jim? Okay, so despite this subtle shake you threw on Jeff for not being here in person, we'll move to Jeff.
Good morning. This is Jeff Bradybaugh at Zion National Park. J-E-F-F, capital B-R-A-D-Y-B-A-U-G-H. First, thanks to the board and to your great staff for all your work and accepting our comments today. We want to discuss some specific NPS recommendations for the Utah Regional Haze SIP. As you know, scenic values are fundamental to the origin and purpose of Zion National Park. Presidential proclamations that establish, then, the Zion National Monument in 1909 and again in 1918 specifically identify the superlative nature of the, quote, "labyrinth of remarkable canyons with highly ornate and beautifully colored walls, which are plainly recorded the geologic events of past ages," end quote. Clean, clear air and the visibility it provides are fundamental to the purpose of the park and to the enjoyment and appreciation of the park by more than 5 million annual visitors. Visitors to sites such as Lava Point, Colab Canyon's viewpoint, and others are rewarded on clear days with distant views of prominent landforms, including Mount Trumbull, 65 to 75 miles to the south near Grand Canyon, as well as the brilliant Pink Cliff capping the Market Gun Plateau, 20 to 30 miles to the north. Thousands also enjoy long iconic views from Angels Landing and other high points. And in recent surveys of park visitors, appreciating the scenic beauty was the most important reason visitors came to Zion. Zion has recently also received designation as an international dark-skY park, marking the park's commitment to protecting views and visibility during the night as well as the day. Protecting Zion's Class 1 air is critical to providing the healthy scenic experience more and more of our citizens are craving. Now regarding Utah's state implementation plan for the second implementation period, the state asked us for feedback on five specific topics. National Park Service responses will be detailed in our written public comments. But in summary, I can share a few of these points generally. First, we encourage the Utah Department of Air Quality to establish a cost-effective threshold for emission controls in line with other states to achieve reasonable progress. Secondly, the NPS recommends rate-based limits achieved through emission controls rather than mass-based limits, in that they assure actual emission reductions. Third, closing Intermountain Generation Station earlier would ensure fewer emissions sooner without consequence to the facility. Fourth, there are opportunities for further controls of U.S. magnesium that we will detail in our upcoming written comments. And fifth, no additional dry sorbin injection analysis has been provided for the Sunnyside Plant. Therefore, we cannot give comments on this topic at this time. If more information is provided, we request more time to review those analyses. In addition to these points, the NPS continues to recommend requiring cost-effective measures to reduce haze-forming pollutants identified through the four-factor analysis in the SIP that are essential to meaningful accomplishments in the SIP. Specifically, the NPS encourages Utah to take timely opportunities to reduce haze-causing emissions from the Hunter and Huntington Power Plants. There are 25 Class 1 areas, including 12 National Park Service areas located within 500 kilometers of Pacific Corp's Hunter and Huntington Power Plants. This gives Utah a unique bang-for-the-buck opportunity to improve visibility in Class 1 areas with emission controls on these facilities. Sulfur dioxide and nitrogen oxide controls identified in the draft SIP would reduce haze-causing emissions, significantly affecting numerous Class 1 areas in the region, would be considered cost-effective by many other states in this round of regional haze planning. We recommend that the Utah Department of Air Quality require implementation of SO2 scrubber upgrades and selective catalytic reduction nitrogen oxide controls for the Hunter and Huntington Power Plants. The NPS estimates that the scrubber upgrades proposed by Pacific Corp. could cost-effectively reduce current sulfur dioxide emissions by over 3,300 tons per year at a low cost of $400 to $900 per ton. And that selective catalytic reduction could reduce current nitrogen oxide emissions by over 12,300 tons per year for an average cost effectiveness of $6,000 per ton per year or less. To reach the goal of no human-caused visibility impairment, our Class 1 areas as well as all of our national parks in Utah need actual emission reduction to improve visibility. The current Utah SIP falls short of securing the most significant emission reductions available. Co-benefits of controls would also include addressing ozone and fine particulate non-attainment areas, along with nitrogen deposition affecting sensitive park ecosystems. We sincerely appreciate the work that Utah has put into preparing this draft SIP and ask you to consider our recommendations and to do more to address haze-causing pollution in this planning period. Thank you for your attention and your efforts to protect clean air and clear views in Utah. We certainly look forward to continuing to work together on these issues in the future. That concludes our verbal comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Staff, any questions for either Jim or Jeff that you'd like for clarification on?
Sure, and I don't know, if I was smart, I'd let Jeff answer this, but prescribed fire, obviously, in wildland fire management, prescribed fire is a recognized tool that's valuable to us and all land management agencies to try to restore natural fire cycles and fire regimes, absolutely. So we would hope to continue to use it as a tool where appropriate, under the right conditions, and I think it's appropriate, absolutely, that it be considered as part of this overall plan. Beyond that, I'm not sure I can comment too much further. We also have Lisa DeVore, who's a technical specialist in our air quality program online, and so we may be able to throw questions to her as well. But it's a valuable tool, and we recognize that it is part of the mix for air quality.
All right, Jim, Jeff, we appreciate you. Thank you.
And we're now going to move to hear comments from those online. If you're online but haven't filled out your name on the Google form, please look in the chat box. Bill has been posting the link so you can fill out your name. I'll announce two at a time, so when you're next, you have a heads up. We're going to start with Cory McNulty. So Cory, get ready to unmute yourself. And then after Cory, we're going to have Ronnie. So Ronnie, get ready after Cory. Cory, go ahead. Please remember to spell your name for the record as well.
Thank you. My name is Cory McNulty, C-O-R-Y-M-A-C.
I'm sorry, Cory, we can't hear you. Give us a second. Try again, Cory.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. My name is Cory McNulty. My name is spelled C-O-R-Y-M-A-C, capital N-U-L-T-Y. I am the associate director for the Southwest Region of National Parks Conservation Association in Salt Lake City. I have been working to clean the air in our national parks in Utah and the Southwest Region for over 10 years. One of the most important tools to achieve this goal is the Clean Air Act's Regional Haze Program. To date, it has resulted in the reduction of 1.4 million tons of visibility impairing pollution across the country, yet appallingly, little to none of those reductions have come from Utah, where we have three of the nation's biggest park polluting facilities, all of them coal plants. Hunter is number two, Intermountain Power 8, and Huntington 18. Some of the most extraordinary views can be seen on clear days in Utah's national parks. While visiting the national parks with my family, we've been disappointed by hazy skies obscuring the scenic vistas and starry night skies. Fortunately, living in Utah, we have also experienced the parks on crystal-clear days, colorful views across otherworldly rock formations with dramatic distant backdrop such as the LaSalle and Henry Mountains. So many people visiting for a once-in-a-lifetime park experience don't ever get that chance. Shockingly, over 15 years into the Regional Haze Program, Utah's most egregious haze polluters have yet to meaningfully reduce emissions, despite repeated input from experts, advocates, the U.S. EPA, the National Park Service, clearly articulating the need to address these problem polluters. It is a statutorily mandated obligation to meaningfully address park service concerns, yet DAQ has not done that. While we recognize the Division of Air Quality staff for working with stakeholders through the planning process, we're deeply disappointed that yet again, the proposed plan does not make real or measured progress towards reducing emissions from sources contributing to visibility impairment in our national parks, which is at odds with the Clean Air Act requirements. Unjustifiably, the proposed plan does not require any pollution controls at the Hunter and Huntington Coal Plants, despite emission cuts being over a decade overdue because of Utah's failure to require cost-effective, proven pollution controls in the first regional haze planning period. This latest plan also allows other cement and manufacturing industries and oil and gas operations to continue pumping haze pollution into our communities and national parks unchecked. Division of Air Quality must revise the plan to require significant emission-reducing measures or earlier enforceable retirement dates for the Hunter and Huntington Coal Plants, where control technologies are missing and emission reductions are long overdue. Require an enforceable retirement or conversion date no later than December 31, 2025, for the Intermountain Coal Plant, and evaluate SO2 scrubber upgrades in the interim. Require actual measurable emission reductions from the Sunnyside Co-Generation Facility, Cricket Mountain Lime Processing Plant, Roly Magnesium Production Facility, and the Leamington Cement Plant. Require statewide nitrogen oxide requirements for flaring engines and other oil and gas sources. Establish a cost effectiveness threshold for reasonable progress that is in line with other states, including our neighboring states. Revisit and conduct comprehensive analyses for the wrongly exempted Lisbon Natural Gas Processing Facility, Intermountain Generation Station, and Kennebec, Utah Copper Facility. To meet its obligations, Utah must, Utah's plan must result in actual measurable emission reductions. Too much is at stake for this to be another paper exercise. Tens of thousands of Utah businesses, residents, and others across the country have commented over the years, asking the state to clean up haze pollution to protect our parks, the health of residents, and our climate. Please, don't squander another once-in-a-decade opportunity to cut Utah's haze pollution. It's time to get this right for Utah to protect people and parks, not polluters. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Any questions from staff? Okay, Cory, we appreciate you. Next, we have Ronnie Derisari from Moab City Council, and after Ronnie, we'll have Alex. So Alex, you get ready after that. Go ahead, Ronnie.
My name is Ronnie Derisari. I'll spell that. First name is R-A-N, as in Nancy, I, last name is D, as in David, E-R-A-S, as in Sam, A-R-Y, as in yellow. Members of the Air Quality Control Board, thank you for your service. My name is Ronnie Derisari. I've been a member of the Moab City Council since 2016 and a resident of Moab since 1999. In 2016, during the Regional Haze Round 1 public hearings, I came up to Salt Lake in my capacity as an elected official to speak to our community's support for requiring BART, or Best Available Retrofit Technology, at Utah's Hunter and Huntington Coal Plants. Hunter and Huntington are 90 miles from the city of Moab, and as many people have said, they are respectively the second and 18th largest sources of haze pollution in the country. My understanding is that the Round 1 was intended to address the most polluting plants in the country first. Had we been able to put BART in place at Hunter and Huntington in 2016, we would have reduced their emissions by some 74%. And as we're talking now about costs, presumably, things would have been cheaper to do then, too, so that might be a lesson for the future about escalating costs and the value of acting sooner than later. Now in Round 2, we see in the draft plan that once again, Hunter and Huntington are avoiding any real emissions reductions. It's unacceptable in the second decade of regional haze planning that two of the largest sources of haze pollution in the country remain uncontrolled, and also very unlikely that such a plan will be accepted by EPA. As you know, federal land managers at NPS and the EPA have already provided draft comments to the Department of Air Quality on the draft plan and indicated it has serious flaws. Both agencies requested specifically that real emission cuts be made at Hunter and Huntington. I respectfully urge you to require meaningful controls at Hunter and Huntington for that and these additional reasons, reasons which I will add, I consider costs to all Utah residents, visitors, and our businesses in my region down here in Moab and Grand County. Let me- Let me list those for you. I, and I'm guessing you, have friends and family, including many children, with asthma and other breathing problems, which are made worse by air pollutants such as coal plant emissions. Moab residents feel a sense of stewardship for our region and its parks, including Arches and Canyonlands National Parks, which we recognize are national treasures. And we have a sense of responsibility to reverse regional haze in the area. We also have businesses of all sorts that depend on the parks and park visibility and visitation for their survival. We consider minimizing the emissions from Hunter and Huntington equally important for health, visibility, and climate reasons. Also, as a side note, should it be interesting to anyone, you may know that we have a federal DOE site here called the Moab Entersite, which is the Moab Uranium Mill Tailings Remedial Action Project, which has to do with cleaning up former uranium mill tailings. And it may be interesting to you to know that our community and region have pushed and have the support of state and federal officials for years to clean up that site sooner than later. And that might be an interesting thing for you to speak with our mayor and the project director at the undersite about one area's decision to not necessarily hold on to high-paying jobs, but to instead opt to clean up this site for the greater good for many reasons first. So finally, I'm asking for your help. Please reject the current state plan, vote now, and send it back to the Department of Air Quality for improvement as soon as possible, because we don't want this to go on decade after decade. You have the power to ensure that my community is protected from dangerous pollution, and it's past time that the state addressed our largest polluters. Please let me and my colleagues down here in Moab know how we can help, and thank you again.
Councilmember Ronnie, we appreciate it. Any questions from staff? Thank you. We'll now move on to Alex from Heal Utah, followed by Eliza. Go ahead, Alex.
Hello, everyone. My name's Alex Veyu. That's spelled A L E X. V as in Victor, E I L L E U X. Thanks for allowing me to provide public comment today. I'm a policy associate for Heal Utah, the Healthy Environment Alliance of Utah. We have been one of Utah's environmental watchdogs for over 20 years, stewarding the health of Utah since 1999. I'm here today to discuss some of our concerns with the current proposed SIP for Round Two of Regional Haze. The current state proposed plan does nothing to cut actual emissions at two of Utah's largest sources, Hunter and Huntington Coal Plants. Action on these plants is necessary and long overdue. Heal, Sierra Club, and a number of other organizations have filed suit against the EPA to hold them to your original 2016 rule. With no real action on Round One, no meaningful haze reductions have yet occurred. This round of haze plans was due to be submitted to the EPA in July of 2021, but Utah and 34 other states are now nearly a year overdue. This makes Round Two Implementation Plan process that much more important. We need to hold these polluters accountable, as these pollution controls are now eight years late. We are now almost two decades into the Regional Haze implementation with no action on the largest haze sources in Utah. Utah's largest polluters still operate uncontrolled, and they're obscuring the viewshed of some of the greatest resources the state of Utah has to offer. Tourism to these parks is one of the biggest economic drivers for the state, and many who live here cherish memories of time spent in these parks, unhindered by noxious haze. The EPA recently provided comments on the current state plan, indicating that it will reject the plan as it is currently written. Moving forward with a plan that we know the EPA will deny is a waste of precious time and resources in cleaning up these airsheds, actually needs to happen now, rather than stalling out in a back-and-forth between the state and the federal government. If the state truly wants more control over its own affairs, what better way to accomplish that than to shape a plan with the EPA's recommendations, which will be accepted by the federal government off the bat, instead of being subject to oversight out of state's hands? These are places of paramount importance to the nation and our people. Hunter Power Plant currently ranks second among all pollution sources in the nation in contribution to haze in national parks. Huntington in is number 18. This is not just for coal pollution, but amongst all polluters. It is imperative that we take action to hold these polluters accountable. We've stalled for long enough in cleaning up these airsheds. The state should create an implementation plan with real emission reductions in line with the EPA's recommendations immediately. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Alex. I'm staff. Any questions? Well, all right, well, that will move on to Eliza from O2 Utah. Go ahead, Eliza.
Hi, everyone. My name's Eliza Cowie, E L I Z A, C O W I E. And I'm the policy director here at O2 Utah. O2 Utah is an environmental nonprofit whose mission is to clean our state's air through election involvement, policy development, and community education advocacy. In 2021, O2 Utah conducted a series of focus groups to better understand the air quality concerns and desired actions from Utahns across the state. The study showed clear results, but Utahns want swift air quality action. We learned that Utahns across the state trust and actually prefer state regulators to address air quality issues, especially when compared to the federal government. The research is clear. Failing to proactively address our air quality issues is killing our residents. A recent BYU study showed that 75% of Utahns are losing up to one year of life expectancy, while 23%, including those who live closest to point source emission sources, are losing up to five years. Additionally, a recent study performed by the University of Utah Health shows a link between poor air quality days and a rise of 16% in miscarriage rates. These impacts are disproportionately impacting our low-income residents and those living closest to point source polluters. Failure to proactively address these issues also has a dramatic economic impact on our state. Utah prides itself on tourism. It's what drives the economy of our small and rural communities around our parks, as well as funds our state programs and departments. Poor air quality has resulted in annual loss of $1.9 billion. We need to address this through all emission sectors, including core source, point source emitters like Hunter and Huntington. We urge the Division of Air Quality and the Air Quality Board to act on the will of Utahns and step up to proactively set pollution reduction standards that will hold polluters accountable, make an outside impact for the health and economy of our residents. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Eliza. Staff, any questions? All right, Eliza, we appreciate it. That's the end of our list for people who have signed up. Is there anyone else online or in person who would still like to make a public comment? All right, remind everyone that you have until 5:00 PM on May 31st to submit your public comments. And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.